It's six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and if you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sandy, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Alunbus.
Present.
Hopkins.
Present.
Ingles.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mayor Shippers.
Here, thank you. Okay, um, let's see, I'm looking for somebody to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, which includes, oh no, nevermind, just-
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alunbus.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, next, we have public comments, and as before, I ask that we behave ourselves as neighbors, and that we please make sure that we have no cheering, no jeering, just let everybody who has something to say have an opportunity to come to the podium and speak uninterrupted. You have three minutes to, um, to make your comments, and as before, as is usual, we do not, it's not time for asking questions, we can't answer your questions at that time, we'll take notes and get back to you if there's things that need addressing, either in good of the order or at another time. So having said that, I'm gonna open the floor for public comments.
And I'm additionally gonna ask that you please speak your name, I know, um, some of you, because you're here a lot, you think you, um, that we know you, and we do, but I need, I can't see your face, so I need you to tell me your name, please, thank you.
Okay, Paul Myers, and my comment is very simple, and that is, I respect each and every one of you as a public servant, as a individual looking to this community with the community's best interest in mind, and I know you, some of you do get paid for your service, some, well, you all do in some way, but, no, you're public servants, and I appreciate you, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Paula.
Welcome to our new council members, good luck to you, I'm Bill Barnett, good to see everybody tonight. Um, wanna thank you first of all, over the, since I started coming here in June of last year, uh, some things have happened that very, are very good, Bottled Water was set up, thank you for doing that and taking those steps, good job, uh, the, through Ice Mountain, very good idea, I support it 100%, uh, to get us through this, you've got Marathon Drive or Street, whatever it is, you've got a plan for that, that's good, you're on the right track, testing, funding came up, and thank, thank you, thank you for doing that, for the benefit of people who cannot afford it, and we get blanket testing to figure out what's going on. Just by happenstance and how this has all happened, there was a benefit to this, 'cause it's drawn attention to PFAS, and people all over, because there has been a campaign run by several citizens, asking others to test their wells, and it's happening all over this town, we're starting to see some trends in helping figure this out, so some positives have come from what is, I feel, a mishandled issue, but moving forward, I hope things can be done differently. Um, there is going to be another town hall on May 14th, and that's hopefully gonna be, everyone's invited, I'd ask you guys to set up a hearing or a meeting, so you can talk, and nobody gets in trouble for, um, joining in, that should've been done last time in hindsight, but in the future, set a meeting, and you guys can all hang out separately or together at the facility, uh, Seven and Four up North Live is involved in it, GL Pan is helping set this up, it's gonna be another positive event, and we're gonna ask everybody, uh, to attend, and we'd ask, I'd ask you, I'm helping as needed, but, um, so that's, that's coming up. The, uh, I would ask that you consider putting a filter on the LDFA discharge pipe, also your wastewater that's going into the clam, it's getting too much PFAS, um, there's a mess going on over, right by your, close to by, actually, to, two of your board members that live very close to the water department, Ms. Shippers, uh, Mayor Shippers, sorry, and Councilmembers Hopkins and Shippers, both of you live pretty close to this, it's coming all the way up Platte, I think you need to test Platte even though it's on Herring side, look under the carpet of what's been put in that river, all these years, three decades of PFAS going in from the leachate from the landfill, the LDFA, regular people pollution, uh, so please take a look at that, I don't believe self-pollution is the cause, the guy right across there in one of the businesses has mega numbers, five times over federal levels, right there, and it trails off going toward Platte, towards the McKinley, trails off going out to the CTC, trails off to Mount, to Platte over by Herring, so you got a real big hotspot right across the street from your sewer department, it's PFAS at 20, I think it was PFOA, but those are bad numbers.
So thank you for your time and service, and, uh, good luck, uh, again, to the new members
who just joined.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Madam Mayor, new council members, Brad Marine, um, first, I'd like to say, excellent job by Ms. Wasson with the minutes, uh, this last meeting's minutes were very in-depth, it was outstanding, I'm not sure what, what, if it's a new technology or what, but I was like, man, this is, this is good. Um, I'd also like to ask the city to formally recognize the work of the Cadillac advocates, specifically Sue and Mary, and the reason I say that, and Bill alluded to it, they have implemented a testing protocol plan, I guess, if you will, and, and there has been overwhelming support of it, they've really reached out, they have, have led the way with this, um, and I think we owe them a thank you. Along those lines, and I know we can't ask questions, but I'm gonna bring it up, and then you can address it, uh, if you see fit, I know when Mr. Alunbus had said to you, Madam Mayor, that when you took the job, that he expected you to reach out to the Cadillac advocates and to work with them, and I'm not sure if there's, if, how that's been done, and to what level that's been done, um, you know, just something to think about. You also had mentioned, uh, I think at the last meeting, of starting a strategic plan, and, and we haven't seen anything, and I don't know if there's something going on behind the scenes, you know, I don't know what this plan is, but you said, hey, next week, we'll have the strategic plan, you talked about a PFAS task force, um, so those are some things, I think, that when, when you express that that's what you're gonna do, we kind of expect it to be done, so. Along those lines, I did a FOIA request for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority minutes and agendas, um, and bylaws and all that kinda stuff, and I haven't got anything, and I see you've got a, a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, uh, agenda item, one of the questions, and I looked at that when you looked at the resolution, and you're signing off that all that was done properly, all those meetings that the Brownfield had were within OMA, the Open Meetings Act, but we know, because I've brought it up a few times, that you have to make sure that you publicly publish those meetings' minutes, you have to publish or make those minutes available, you have to publish when those meetings are, uh, and if you don't do that, you're in violation of the Act, which is against the law, so that means a court could come in theoretically and say any decision made during those proceedings could be ruled invalid, so as you move forward, that's just something to think about, it, I know Mr. Pescha is gonna ask you to sign this thing, uh, and to be in favor of it, but I would ask Mr. Pescha, did he actually hold those meetings according to the OMA? Um, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, um, hey, I just wanna thank William Barnett.
Tell us who you are, so we're there.
Oh.
Say your name.
Oh, Ted Bunts.
It's Randy Lindell.
Oh, oh, excuse me.
I got his voice down, actually.
She can't see it, she can't see it.
My bad, Randy Lindell.
Thanks, Randy.
Citizen of Cadillac.
Yes.
Um, I just wanna thank William Barnett, Brad Marine, uh, the DEQ Eagle, whatever, for their due diligence on this PFAS, so now, we have it at the Cadillac Mackinac Trail School, we got PFAS in the drinking water, we got PFAS in the drinking water at the Vocational Center, this has gotta stop, so it's gotta stop by heads rolling and termin, and, and people hitting the road, where the rubber hits the road, we gotta ask you to leave the Cadillac, 'cause for the last 10 years, I've been preaching this, about what's happening, the more people and everything, the industry coming in, so anyways, but thanks to certain residents and their ability to help out, but this PFAS, our youth, our most precious commodity, and I really wanna say, damn, what's the matter with you guys, this, our children are our most important commodity, and they're drinking this poison water at Mack Trail, Vocational School, my children drank it, and everything else, so, it just isn't gonna happen, so, and the city Cadillac officials need to resign, who have been responsible for over 10 years, knowing that this has been here, uh, many dishonest, underhanded, unethical requests that violate the city charter are being undermined by our city manager, Marcus, to benefit himself and certain other individuals, it, it's time for all who have known about this PFAS in our city, that is spreading throughout the city and county, it's time for all to say, uh, goodbye, you know, uh, we messed up, there's people that are critically ill, they're dying, they got cancer, what's going on, come on, you guys have known about it, and, uh, one more thing, real quick, before my time runs out, um, capital improvements, Director of Finance, uh, gosh, we're running out of money, where's the marijuana money, where's the COVID money, we're gonna sink another, so much into the pavilion, farmer's market, et cetera, we sunk a million into the lofts, other citizens' money, and now we're gonna sink some more money into other projects throughout town, and, of all things, the developer on Aldridge Street wants to build a duplex apartments, et cetera, and guess what, the city wants to fix only Aldridge Street, so, you know, uh, hey, you know, at the, at the cost of 400K, where's all this money going to, you know, so the developer of that property, like the developers of the lofts, he gets a million dollars, and this guy's gonna get a 500, whatever it is, road, but, but yeah, we got no money, and then the Director of Utilities is gonna say, hey, we ain't got no money for major projects, we're bringing in more people, we're getting more uses, pumps,
Thank you, Randy.
and everything's wearing out, so, hey, uh-
Thank you.
No, thank you. Gotta get it together, everybody, enough's enough.
People are dying.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna close public comment, and move to the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the work session on March 17th, minutes from the regular meeting that same day, and the closed session on that day.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Support. Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alunbus?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, next, the public hearings.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council, the first public hearing on our agenda tonight is the request to consider the adoption of an ordinance that amends the city's zoning map regarding Wright Street and Aldridge Street, I'm gonna invite John Wallace, our Development Director, to come forward and provide, uh, an overview, thank you, John.
Thank you, good evening. Um, at a recent Planning Commission meeting, there was a rezoning public hearing held, and it was for a property that, uh, there's one building at four, or 534 Aldridge Street, and, uh, that property is also connected to another property owned, uh, by the same owner, it's, uh, Cornerstone Ministries, um, the, uh, proposal for rezoning was prompted by a proposal for a purchase of that property, but they wanted to achieve the rezoning prior to the sale of the property, uh, so there is, uh, two properties that are, uh, essentially together, one has one building, which is the church building, and the other property is vacant, uh, and it's connected to the first property, you'll see it in the upcoming aerials. Uh, this is the, uh, entry to the church at 534 Aldridge Street. Uh, this aerial photo gives you, uh, a little bit of, um, context of where the site is, uh, it's, uh, to the north of the site is, uh, that solar farm and the industrial parks, uh, it's tucked behind some single-family properties, uh, and then there will be some, uh, and, uh, there's, um, institutional property to the south of the property. Uh, the zoning, the entire block on which the subject parcel is located is zoned in the R2 district, uh, adjoining blocks south of Wright Street are zoned in the R2 and R4 districts, and blocks north of Wright Street are in the I1 district, which is industrial, so the entire site is essentially in a single-family district right now, um, and, uh, the surrounding zoning is, is kinda mixed with industrial to the north and institutional to the south. The reason for this slide is to show you, um, the challenge in trying to do any multifamily property, all the properties you see in color here are zoned in either the RM1 or the RM2 districts, uh, the problem is, though, that most of those properties already have development on those properties, or they have other projects that are slated for those pro, properties, so at this point in time, we really have no real opportunities for, uh, other multifamily development, unless that were to, uh, include another possible rezoning, or possibly taking down buildings to build multifamily on, uh, some of the properties zoned appropriately, but have single-family or other uses located on them. The proximity of the site, uh, it's shown here on the red dot, it does have very good proximity to the industrial parks, uh, also has close proximity to the high school site, and is within a mile of the downtown site, so in terms of looking at a site, if you're looking at affordable housing, rental housing, uh, for multifamily, it does offer opportunities to be able to be walkable distance to employment and to schools and to the downtown, uh, possibly not requiring a vehicle to, to live at this location. Just to give you some concept of, uh, what the site and the surrounding areas look like, here's a few photos, again, this is the entry in the frontage of the church, it's, uh, uh, between two single-family properties, the site is viewed from Wright Street, which is the large vacant property, um, to the rear of the church site is shown here, then you have the single-family properties that are located on, uh, either side of the church building itself, and the, uh, land to the, uh, south of the site is the Cadillac area public school site, and you can see the, uh, school building there in the, in the background of the photo. Uh, the master plan, uh, does have the site slated, uh, to be an medium-density residential, this district is intended primarily for single-family development, however, it indicates that some variety of housing types, uh, and for single-family development, uh, could be appropriate, and, uh, with consumer preferences in mind. Um, the following objectives are actually found on page 27 of the master plan, it says to maintain the current range of single-family residential districts to accommodate varying site densities, housing type styles, and consumer preferences, and to provide opportunity for a single-family housing to be integrated into mixed-use development projects, so while it is primarily, uh, single-family, it does indicate that a variety of densities might be appropriate, and possibly even mixed in with other uses such as commercial uses. Uh, having said that, the master plan is also a little outdated, it's been, uh, about 10 years since we've updated the master plan, and, uh, have not taken into account the current shortage that we have of multifamily properties, and also that, uh, we've had a, a, a whole rush of recent multifamily projects, which have targeted different sites, uh, and have, uh, taken up the remainder of the optimal sites for this type of development. Staff recommendations and consideration of the analysis of existing land use zoning, the master plan and factors for rezoning consideration, uh, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the rezoning application as presented, uh, it should be understood that a site plan will have to undergo a department head site plan review for any change of use of the church building, or any new development, just for your information. And, uh, recommended motion to approve, approve a zoning map amendment, rezoning from R2 to RM1 for parcel number 10-041-00-089-00, which is the 534 Aldridge location, and parcel number 10-041-00-100-00, and those, uh, properties are shown and separated by color on the adjoining map, so you can see their relationship, uh, to each other and to the surrounding site, and that's all I have.
John, really quick, did the, um, uh, Planning Commission support the staff recommendation?
Uh, yes, the Planning Commotion, Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of recommending to council that, uh, it be approved, also, the owner of the, current owner of the property is here tonight, if you should have any questions, uh, for them at some point.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open up this hearing for public comment, how many minutes, I always forget, is this five minutes? Five minutes for public comment ba, uh, related to this hearing?
Randy Lindell, citizen of Cadillac, um, you know, whatever goes around comes around, 100 years ago, down in New York City, we, we had a place called Tammany Hall, where Boss Hogg was running the whole show, John Wallace is doing a real good job of that, too, as, uh, Tammany Hall, Cadillac's become Tammany Hall, 100 years, the more things change, the more things stay the same, and that's, um, so anyways, uh, got five minutes, I'll just sit here. Um, I disapprove of approving Aldridge Street property for zoning, um, for one reason, the city Cadillac has, has come out and said that they only are gonna be able to afford to repair and put new water and sewer into one street this year, at a, at a cost of, what, 420K, and the rest of those roads are gonna have to be tore up, et cetera, so again, who's, who benefits? By rezoning this gentleman's property and letting him make money, and then the citizens of Cadillac pay for his new road sewer and water at a cost of almost a 420K, we did it to the lofts, now we're doing it to the only street in town that we can budget for, because we're running out of money, and that's doing Aldridge Street, now, isn't that a coincidence, does anybody care, does anybody really care anymore? Uh, this gotta stop, that's why we need a change of guard here, you know, it's just getting too, you know, everybody's in it for themselves, hey, what can I get, farmer's market's gonna cost a million dollars, Aldridge Street's the only street that's gonna be repaired next year, or this, this next physical year, and that's a tune of 400,020, we're running out of money, well, where's the money at? Mr. Finance Director? Can we get a tax cut? But anyways, no, seriously, our tax money is gonna benefit certain individuals only, the lofts, the gentleman, we put a million dollars there-
Please keep your comments related to this hearing.
Okay, but then I was throwing it back to Aldridge Street as an example, Mayor, and then, again, the only street we're gonna do in Cadillac is gonna be Aldridge Street, new water, sewer, and repave it, for the, somebody to make some money to put up a duplex on the benefit of the citizens of Cadillac, and again, and I will go off record, just like our children and the sick people that are dying in Cadillac, does anybody give a damn, does anybody care about the illness and what's happening? That's a real shame, it's a damn shame.
Thank you, Pastor Troy Baxter, and, uh, glad to be coming to this point in the, uh, rezoning process, it's, uh, exciting, and, uh, just to set the record straight, um, the street at, uh, on Aldridge was slated to be repaved four years ago, and, uh, long before we began this process of rezoning, so there's no favoritism being shown, uh, to repave the streets, and to that I say hallelujah, and, uh, I'm obviously in support of, uh, rezoning the properties, uh, if we believe the reports that we need another thousand, uh, units of housing for Cadillac to continue to grow, this is a good project for the city, um, for the need, also, it's a good project by location, because it's in between, um, industrial, um, and going into residential, which is, uh, a transition from one zoning, uh, area to another, it's also, um, um, supported by the neighbor, okay, that is, uh, next door, and I've made a, a point to try to be a good neighbor to the neighborhood and have open ass, access as the pastor of the church, uh, on Aldridge Street, uh, um, that location has served our congregation well, we've just outgrown it, and so, right now, there is a parking problem, uh, two blocks down the street, and so, uh, if this zoning is approved and, um, parking would be required off-street, that would resolve, uh, whatever, um, I'm gonna call it irritations to the neighborhood from the park- resolve whatever, I'm going to call it irritations to the neighborhood from the parking up and down the street on Aldrich Street on Sundays and Wednesdays and other times. So our, our congregation, we grew out of this and we bought the jail. And so, it's a five-acre site, right next to the hospital, and promises to be a really good transition for us as a congregation. So, again, I'd like to restate that the planning commission did agree with the staff and the studies and did vote unanimously, without hesitation, that this is the right direction. So I would, I would appreciate your support as we continue to move forward to better the place that, that we call home. And Cadillac has been very good, good to us, and I appreciate that inclusion and want to continue to better the community and continue to work to beautify the community as we can continue to move forward. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Nikki Schultz, I'm the executive director of the Alliance for Economic Success. I also chair the Housing Advocacy Committee for Wexford and Musawaki Counties. We, I've been working at this for about a year and a half now, and it's really hard to get investors and developers to come to our area. And so, I really encourage you guys to support this because anyone who is willing to put the money and the time into additional housing in our area, we're not talking hundreds of units, we're talking a handful of units, and we know that there's a shortage. And so, I really encourage you to support this because we know that the people that are investing, that already are here and are in love with our community, we really want to support them. So I just would like to support this.
Seeing no one else, throw it to council?
I'd like to ask Troy some questions.
Sure.
Mr. Baxter?
Yes.
Could you step up to the plate again, sir? Seeing as how we know each other a little bit.
Certainly.
How many apartments are you going to, you're keeping the church and that's what you're going to turn into the apartments, right?
No.
The building. You're going to tear the church building down?
No.
Okay, start over then. Let's start with something, yes.
Okay, to be clear.
I thought you were going to-
Heard this in political forums, to be clear.
To be fair.
Okay. We, we're, our intention is to sell the property.
Right.
Okay, and prospective developers, okay?
Excuse my verbiage then. Go ahead.
Leave me. I have no desire to be a landlord anymore than him. But prospective developers would intend to have some apartments in the existing facility, which is now the church.
Okay.
And then, at some point in the future, which is undisclosed, develop the Wright Street field, multiple family. And so, that's all in line with those structures. I don't know how many units, okay? I don't know the nature of that, it's not my, my call, okay? But I am in support of this direction as we've all gathered around the need for housing.
I certainly wish he was here because I had a couple other questions. Like, how many apartments are going to go in the church?
Well, that's not my call.
Answer those questions. By golly, step up the plate then. While he's stepping up.
Yeah, and we're not approving any specific project or number of units.
Just the reasons-
For the benefits, for the benefit of the public, perhaps.
I just have a few questions.
Yeah, it's just the rezoning at this stage.
Charlie Tinker, I am the next-door neighbor and prospective buyer. Have yet to determine the number of units. We have to get a mock-up, a floor plan together. I would say more, more than a duplex. We'd probably be talking about four or more units. But certainly, you're not going to squeeze 20 units into a 4,000-square-foot building.
But you do plan on using the church building for the apartment?
Correct. The plan would be to revitalize the church, you know, to restore it, to upgrade it, that kind of thing.
You know, we only have one problem with, that's my neighborhood, my people, is your parking. As Troy talks about, it's going to be better, but really, you've got about an eight-foot driveway and you want people to go there and park behind the church.
So, so again, I partially own that driveway. The plan would be to reconfigure things a bit and then eventually to situate a parking lot in the back. You know, plenty of room to accommodate that. Wouldn't likely necessarily need to utilize the existing street parking even. And as he said, you're dealing with potentially a few dozen folks coming in multiple times a week. I, I really can't believe that this would be any more of an imposition than that in any way, shape, or form.
And there was no quid pro quo, we'll pave your street if you-
No.
Can we put that to rest?
I hadn't even moved back when that occurred, so no.
One quid pro quo for paving a street for-
Not one single time, nope.
By golly, I like your attitude.
How long has Aldrich been in there? I know Troy said four years, but I think it might have been a bit-
I think longer than that.
It's been a bit longer than that, yeah.
Years and years.
Yeah.
And to be fair, it does need it.
Oh, yes, it does. Thank you, though.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And remember, this isn't to approve anything except to change the zoning, and the only way any of this could happen is if we upgrade the zoning. And so, that's the question this evening.
Can I be seated?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending the city zoning map regarding Wright Street and Aldrich Street.
And I'll support. Councilmember French? Oh, I'd like to just make the comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
That, for once, we've got a seller who's wanting to do the zoning before, rather than it happening the other way where the buyer buys the place and then changes the zoning. So I commend, Mr. Baxter for starting this process before he sells the property, since that's been a complaint about some of our other zoning issues. That's the comment I wanted to make. Councilmember French?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
No.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we have another public hearing. Same rules apply. This is the Cadillac Lofts Brownfield Plan Amendment Number Two.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. There are a couple of special guests with us this evening that I'm going to invite up after some introductory remarks that I'm going to make myself, that'll provide a general overview about the Brownfield process and sort of this project, and then get into some deeper details about the project from the representative of ownership. But I, I think just for some historic purposes and also to, to try to clarify, and my points will likely be reiterated this evening, Cadillac Lofts has always been a two-building development. It's perhaps the largest and biggest and first mixed-use development downtown that we have seen in, in multiple generations. The first building went up prior to COVID and has been kidded about or around about how it was essentially Frankenstein's monster in terms of all of the various programs and incentives that they had to get put together, you know, starting out with a nonprofit development corporation that took a chance on Cadillac, coupled with federal grants through the community development block grant program, coupled with a neighborhood enterprise zone abatement on floors two through four for the residential component, coupled with a commercial redevelopment or revitalization, I always get those two names? Redevelopment, thank you, program grant for the commercial spaces located on the ground floor, coupled with a Brownfield plan for the entire site that would, that would involve both phases one and two. All of that to make it possible, I think, for there to be approximately a 1% to 2% at the most profit margin for the nonprofit. Now, obviously, it's a nonprofit, but still, 1% to 2% is absurdly low. The, due to a whole host of different issues with, with what was happening in the world from COVID-19 that hit to ridiculously high inflationary pressures that hit, the ability for there to be access to other outside funding becoming very difficult, the construction of building two was essentially put on hold for a handful of years. But very excitedly, I can advise that, that is not going to be the case, assuming we can get through this evening. Building, Building Two is slated to start this month. The part of, or I should say not part, but the objective of what the city council is being asked to consider this evening, again, you'll hear in clearer details in a moment, but in short, it simplifies everything. The type of Brownfield program that has recently been awarded as an example to the North Lake Street Flats project just simply did not exist back when the Cadillac Lofts Brownfield Plan was put in place. There is now a residential tax increment financing Brownfield program available. It's a new tool. It is what every residential-based development that the city is currently looking at, or, or when I say looking at, we're currently involved with, is looking at in terms of being able to get their projects over the finish line. And this development, and by moving or amending their current plan to go into that model, will be able to actually simplify where they're at. In fact, later on in your agenda, assuming that this is approved, they would be revoking the commercial abatement as well as the other residential abatement, or asking us to revoke those. So it's a really exciting time, you know, to see residential development happening here in town. As I mentioned, you know, we're hopeful that others will still get out of the gate, including, you know, Cooley School, that, that has been talked about for, for quite a while. And without any more ado here, I'm going to ask Mac McCollin, who is our consultant, to provide some additional remarks.
Thank you, Marcus. I'm not sure it qualifies as special guests.
Yes, you do.
I'm Mac McCollin, I'm the Brownfield consultant for the Brownfield Authority and the city. I'm going to kind of talk about process, and I think Marilyn can come up and talk a little bit more about the, the project itself. As Marcus said, the original project was in 2019, and at that time, the Brownfield eligible activities were environmental demolition, infrastructure, those sorts of things, kind of hard costs. The law was changed in 2023 to provide for the difference between the cost of construction, development cost, and revenues for projects that target housing at 120% of the area median income, both rent and income. And so, that's kind of a unique aspect. Now, we're kind of, it's a financial model. And what this does, again, is there's no upfront costs. These, this is the capture and reimbursement into the, into the project of taxes generated by the project. So the project wouldn't be able to, to proceed otherwise. There was, you know, one quick amendment to deal with infrastructure challenge that we had early on, and I was thinking back, I think we got an Eagle Grant to do assessments, and did the environmental assessment in 2009. So we've been working on this project for a little while, got a CDBG grant to take the buildings down, an Eagle Grant to deal with some of the environmental activities. And again, this amendment now utilizes that new tool to be able to close the gap between the development costs and the revenues for these targeted projects. There's a significant investment in this project, $26 million project, and there's significant public investment that's happening as well, from HUD grants to MDC grants to MISTDA grants that are involved. And, you know, these projects now require kind of full financial disclosure. So we've gone through the pro formas, you know, kind of working with the, the financial institutions as well as the granting agencies to ensure that there's a need for these kinds of incentives. And the, kind of the great part about it is that the city's contribution itself of those taxes, tax increment, is about less than 9% of the total public investment that's happening in here. So we're leveraging federal and state dollars. It's, you know, like a 90, 92% grant that we're getting with an 8% match, if you want to kind of look at it that way. The Brownfield Authority reviewed and approved the plan at their March 12 meeting and recommended approval by the commission. This is the public hearing that has been noticed and is being held for that. Consideration of a resolution to approve the Brownfield Plan, and as Marcus mentioned, you know, one of those kind of conditions or circumstances is later in the, in the agenda to terminate the two tax abatements and provide full funding for the project.
Mac, if you and Mike, could you give perhaps like a Reader's Digest update publicly about how, you know, how Brownfield functions? It's not as if the city is writing a check.
That's correct. It's all based on the future revenues generated by the investment in the project. It's going to be a $26 million investment. Those taxes from vacant property now rise. As those taxes are paid by the developer, those taxes are captured by the Brownfield Authority and then reimbursed now as a revenue stream to the project to close that gap between the housing costs, the development costs, and the revenues that the project are generating.
With the developers' tax dollars.
With the developers' tax dollars, that's right. So they're fully taxed, fully paid, those taxes are captured and reimbursed. At the end of that time, at the end of the period of the, of the Brownfield Plan, those taxes go back to all the taxing jurisdictions. The city represents about 30% of that tax base. The rest are other local units of government and the state. Couple things I want to highlight as well, there are, you know, school operating funds and state education tax. School is held harmless. They're paid their, their amount for the foundation grants, from the foundation dollars that have come in, and so they're, they're held harmless in terms of their revenues. And a few years ago, the intermediate school district is also reimbursed for any taxes that are captured as well. So schools are held, held harmless in this case.
How many years does the tax abatement take?
It's a total of 30 years for that, from 2019, when the first Brownfield Plan was passed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Marilyn Crumka from Michigan Community Capital is here with us this evening to write some additional details about the project. Great to see you.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, everyone, thank you for having me. As Marcus said, I'm Marilyn Crumka, I'm the Vice President of Development for Michigan Community Capital. A little bit of background about our organization, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we're also a community development finance institution. So our main mission is to drive private investment into low-income areas. And actually, since we started this project, this census tract has moved from a low-income census tract to a moderate-income census tract. So there's been a lot of changes since we started working on this project in 2018, I think is when we started talking to y'all. We were attracted to the project because of all of the proactive work that Cadillac has done as a community. So everything from becoming redevelopment-ready, certified, to all of the investments that have happened in downtown over the past 15 years. So we really saw that the community was united in investing in themselves first and had signaled that they were open and wanting investment in their community. So when we first built Cadillac One, the first one, it was the first multifamily building permit pulled in 30 years in the city. And it was very challenging to bring together, and that's why it was so important that, you know, a community-minded nonprofit developer was leading the charge in partnership with the city's vision. So the first project cost seven and a half million in hard cost, and it was built by a local builder here. But the appraised value when we, before we started construction, was 3.5 million. So the bank basically said, your building's worth less than half, so we'll give you a loan for like, it was like 2 million. And so, we had to come up with the rest of it through grants and through equity, through our own dollars that we've been able to fundraise as a nonprofit. And we really had to convince the bank that there was a need for housing, even though there was no proof that there was a demand for housing in Cadillac, we knew there was because we were listening to kind of these stories about, you know, the housing is- the housing is over thirty years old and people are having to drive in, and that we need housing. So we built it, and we kind of proved the bank that we were right. The building leased up in less than four months, which is amazing. We typically expect a building to only lease up about four apartments a week. So, sorry, a month, four apartments a month. So it was, it was very successful, and we've stayed 100% full in this building. Basically, as soon as there's an opening, we fill it. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the demographics of our first phase, and we hope to have similar demographics in the second phase. Sorry, let me get the right sheet out. I've got too many papers. Well, I got half of my sheet. Hold on. Oh, here we go. So we like to talk in the language of area median income, which is a very specific way to speak about incomes, and it's not because we want to do that, it's because all of the funding that we access is in this language of area median incomes. And so what they're talking about is a percent of, you know, what the median income is for the county. And so as a nonprofit, we like to target between 60 and 120% of the area median income. We are not a very low income. That is not our target. Our target is kind of this working middle income. And, and the reason that's our target is because there's a whole swath of developers that focus on very low income. And there's a whole swath of developers that focus on high income. There's not a lot of developers that focus on this middle income demographics, and that's because it's really hard to fund. There's not the same financial tools as very low income, and it obviously doesn't cash flow as well as a higher income development. So Phase One has forty-eight apartments? No, no, that's not right. Forty-two apartments. Seventeen of those are incomes under 80% of the area median income. So that's around fifty, under 50,000. Seven income, seven tenants are above 120% AMI, so those would be like considered market rate. And the rest are under, under that. So we have incomes as low as 21,000, you know, all the way through, well, 17,000 a year, all the way through many tenants that are in the 35 to $40,000 range. So we are able to house in one building a variety of tenants from walks of life, and many of whom were, took a new job because they were able to find housing, or they were able to move out of their parents' house because they were able to find housing. And we actually do have a significant amount of empty nesters that have decided to sell their house in Cadillac, which opens up their single-family home to sell to a family. So we're really proud of the impact of Phase One. Like Marcus said, we've always planned to do the project in two phases, but COVID hit, and what we thought Phase Two would be easier, because now we have the comps, the bank's not going to tell us that nobody wants to live in Cadillac, we were excited. And then, and then COVID happened, and our costs went up by around 40% in hard costs. So I just signed a construction contract that was $11 million for essentially the same building, with the addition of apartments on this rear half. We decided to do the apartments on the second phase on the first floor, because we have struggled to lease up all 9,000 square feet in the first, the first phase. And the first phase is really better oriented towards the downtown for commercial. So we wanted to have there be some commercial in the second phase, but add more housing, because we know that there's the demand there. So our project costs have gone up significantly, but in addition to that, our interest rates have gone up, so we really haven't been able to finance much more. So this project is a $15 million total project, so that includes acquisition, architectural engineering, bank fees. It does not include a developer fee, so we are not getting paid for any of the work that we've done since 2018 in terms of like an upfront sum. Fifteen million dollar project, and we're going to be able to finance 2.3 in a construction loan. So the rest of it has come from federal grants, state grants, a significant amount is coming from our equity, and then we're also doing a bridge loan into the project. So I tell you all this background because it's been a long journey, and the tool of the Brownfield TIF is a very powerful tool in your community to help encourage the kind of investment that you want to see. And so this will require us to sign a development agreement with the community that would ensure affordability of these units until the end of the brownfield plan. So it really is controlling the kind of development that this will be over time. MCC does plan to retain ownership over this for as long as I'm here, and hopefully longer after that. And I plan to be here for a long time, because I love working for MCC, but, sorry, I lost my train of thought with all the dingy. Anyway, so we plan to have long-term ownership, and the biggest reason for that is because we'll never be able to get our investment out of this building. So, you know, we have many, many millions of dollars of equity we've put into this project, and we'll never be able to sell it for a profit, maybe, you know, maybe in 50 years if Cadillac's really like, which I hope it is, because it seems like there's a lot of development happening. So we're here to ask for the brownfield plan amendment. This is a tool that we would have requested from the beginning if it was available. It is exactly the kind of project that this tool was made for, in hopes to encourage middle-income housing. And so I, I hope that you'll consider our request, and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so then I'll open the public hearing related to the issue of the, the brownfield change for the lofts. And let me guess.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening. Hey, the lofts, second phase would be a good, good plus for a city Cadillac. We already got Phase One up, and so it's not going to stop it. It's really amazing that, how these people that are building it, you know, are getting federal, using other people's money to make money, you know? Even though they're saying that they ain't going to be able to get their money back out of it, though. But, you know, federal money, state grant, aid money, et cetera, et cetera. Hey, that's a beautiful thing, using other people's money to make money. But anyways, yeah, lofts too will be a good, a good thing for downtown, you know? It'd be, it's a good fit, you know? The first one's a good fit also. But then again, it all comes back, and I just, and I hate to keep emphasizing this, but the, the usage, the underground usage, the water, sewer, et cetera, it all comes back onto the people as citizens of Cadillac. The more people we bring in, it's going to cost more money to pump water, it's going to cost more money to treat the, water that's being discharged to the treatment plant. And again, that's all brought back on the citizens, because what's going to happen is that, in the next physical year, they're going to want more money from the citizens to pay for water and sewer. And who's, who does the most usage of the water and sewer? Are the industries, though they are reclaiming it, I do agree on that. But what, what will happen with the, the lofts is that it's going to bring, again, more people, and what's happening? Let's see, Cadillac, oh, we got a brand-new jail? Hey, we got a lot of crime? Perfect. Now Traverse City's got to build a new jail.
Please keep to the point. We're talking about the law.
I'm talking about bringing people in, TI. The more people we bring in, we got to build jails, we got to add more police, we got sewer, water, and what does that all reflect on? The citizens of Cadillac. That is my point, and then I, you know, that's the second time you interrupted me when I was trying to dot my i's and cross my t's, so.
Trying to keep you on point.
Yeah, well, you should know your place, too. But anyways, what will happen is that more, the treatment plant's going to need more room, capacity, it's going to cost more money with more people moving in. And again, I'm going to emphasize, if you ever walk down Main Street at eight o'clock in the morning, you can't do it, the pollution is so bad, on a hot, summer day, muggy day. I mean, the exhaust, the emissions, the summers, it's tough. But the more people we bring in, we're going to have more crime, our utility rates are going to go up, and we're going to have more crime, and it's just a vicious circle, just goes around and around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody say more crime? Yes, I did. All right. Defense lawyers will appreciate that.
And Mark Hanson, people get it.
Okay, okay, everybody.
Sorry. So thank you for moving forward with this. I have a couple of questions I think that are important. There's pollution under there, a huge plume. I'm just curious, who's, last time we had a $900,000 grant, I think, from Eagle to clean that up. It needs to be cleaned up, that's another benefit that could be talked about, about the completing this project. Just curious how much money's coming this time with the inflation figures we just heard. I'm guessing it's going to be hopefully 40% more money to cover that. Did also, I also did have a question. Percentages were talked about, I think, eight percent. I'd just so like to hear what the actual dollars are, the city's investment to this, so that the public knows where the money's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Bill Farina, defense lawyer.
Got it.
And I'm not a lawyer, and I'm Brad Marine. So a lot of people involved in this project, a lot of money involved in this project. My concern goes back to not the project itself, but the way it came about, and I think Bill alluded to it. There are meetings, and, and I keep harping on this, because there's supposed to be transparency within government. So some of these questions that we have, if these meetings have been made public, in other words, if we had the opportunity to attend, or if we had the opportunity to review the minutes like we're supposed to have, we can have a pretty good understanding of what's going on. I would think that some of these investors, who have got millions of dollars wrapped up into this, would like to have confidence in our city manager, that our city manager knows how to conduct a meeting according to the law. Pretty simple stuff. You would think anybody with a four-year degree would know how to do that. It's not being done. Now granted, nice job, Mr. Pescia, for getting these people together, but I would be nervous. Because at any point, if somebody really wanted to push back and had deep pockets and wanted to challenge the way you came about with some of these decisions, I think they'd have a very valid point. And, and that, in the long term, is going to hurt Cadillac. If Cadillac has a reputation of just having a rogue city manager doing the things that he sees fit in order to generate business, well, that's great for the short term, but what happens in the long term? It's like with the LDFAs and PFAS. We had a, a, a city manager who did not know how to conduct a meeting appropriately. As a result, things were kept from the public. How do we know things aren't being kept from the public with the brownfield? We don't, because he's violating OMA, and OMA is there for that reason specifically. Nothing more, nothing less. It's to be able to see what our government officials are doing. What kind of decisions are they making? What kind of discussions are they having, like sidebar conversations? People need to know that. And if you sit back and you just continue to condone a city manager who operates in a rogue methodology because it looks good because he's getting projects, well, it's going to haunt us. And not just you, but the, us, the citizens, because we're going to have to pay for his mistakes.
Can you please say how this relates to this hearing?
Very much like this hearing, because this hearing is about, this was approved in a, in a brownfield redevelopment authority process. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority conducted meetings outside the OMA, which prohibited us from seeing what's going on and reviewing what's going on. So therefore, you're asking the citizens to dedicate millions of dollars to a project that we have no idea, because it not, has not been made public. So it's very, very specific to this discussion. And his inability to hold those meetings in that context puts everything at risk. Now, you can go ahead and obviously approve it, I'm sure you probably will. But keep in mind, anybody along the line that gets a little bit upset about this, didn't like who was ordered the contract, didn't like the way the contract was done, this guy with some pockets can say, "Wait a minute, how did this come about?" And they'd have a valid concern. Good luck. Thank you.
I am Mary Galvanic, and I just have one thing to say about this. Please, for the love of God, please, God, look for pollution under those lofts before you build them. It is there. I can promise you, there are stories of that old grocery store having tons and tons of barrels of pollution in its basement when it was shut down. They all rusted and leaked through, and it was a huge disaster. That has stories of pollution in that area. Please, for the love of God, check that area before you build these lofts. Please. That's it.
Thank you. Let's wait till, um, what do you, can, can we do that? Yeah, wait till this is done and then address that. Okay, seeing nobody else, open for discussion. Would you, can we ask for you to come up and clarify that?
Yeah, start with the pollution.
Yeah, start with the pollution part.
Sure. So we have so many, many, many hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of reports, and we have spent thousands, tens of thousands, on consultants to study the site. We have an approved, it's called a response activity plan, so both the, it's called Eagle Environment, Great Lakes, they changed it, but it used to be the DEQ. They've approved the plan, and so has the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. We have an approved grant that the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority applied to for Eagle to help clean up the contamination. That's an $800,000 grant. So we will be excavating the site out, the entire footprint of the site down 12 feet to get out all the contamination, and that will be brought to the appropriate landfill that it needs to go to. Throughout that process, we will have an environmental consultant on our end that does testing, and then send those reports to the city's separate environmental consultant, and that will all be overseen by Eagle, which is the environmental department for the state. So we are very aware of that there is some nasty stuff. Mostly it's from the dry cleaner. And so that has made this project even more, on top of all the financial and the construction costs. But the great thing is that there are so many engineers who work at the state level who are overseeing our process, and at the end of it, the site will be cleaned up to a residential standard, and we will have that signed off by the state. So I guess the, the great news is this project will clean that up for good and, and create some housing while we're at it. So, yeah, any other questions?
Do you have a short version of the story of how we found the dry cleaning contamination? Obviously, we had an idea before we went in, because we knew there was a dry cleaners on, on site, but we got into that site and then found...
Yeah, we paid for, the, the story is, we paid for a lot of testing, drilling, to be done. So we knew it was going to be there. When you buy a site, you do something called a Phase One Environmental, which is basically like a book report on what's been on there over the past, you know, 100-plus years. And they said, yes, there clearly was a dry cleaner. And so that signals that you do a lot of testing, that takes a long time. So all of those reports are, have been sent to the, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's consultant, and I believe our- And I believe are included in the brownfield plan, is that right? The testing?
The test, they're referenced.
They're referenced. So, is that the story you wanted? Okay. We'll also have an ongoing vapor mitigation system. So essentially, it's a system that's continuously pulling air away, it's a fan system. And then that will require long-term testing as well, so we'll be a hundred percent sure that we didn't miss anything in the ground. And, and we'll have to report on that as well.
Thank you. Thanks. Do we need to address anything with the
Open meeting?
process and the brownfield meeting? Were those meetings open?
One thing that is
Yes, yeah.
is, um, the, the project also pays in eligible activities, infrastructure. So infrastructure that's directly related to the project, and that's about one point one seven million dollars over the life of the project, that's gonna be re, captured and reimbursed to pay for the bonds that were conducted for infrastructure improvements around the site, improvements to Mitchell and Cass and
Paid through their, through the developers' tax dollars.
Yes, through the developers' tax dollars. So we're able to add on public infrastructure to these projects, and then get them reimbursed to pay off the bonds through the tax dollars generated by the project.
Yeah, we explained that the first ti, the first time around, when we do private streets in the city, we just spend that money, and that money's spent. You know, there, there was, um, you know, we supported the infrastructure on, on all four corners of the development. And that was, is one point one seven the, the whole total for phase one and two, and phase two? Okay. And that is one point one seven million, does that, what does that include? The sidewalks, the streets, the street lighting? What type of infrastructure activities were included?
Yeah, it was, it was improvements to, all, all the roads around Shelby, as well as Cass, Chapin, and Mitchell Street included as well. The, the Chapin and Shelby, I think, are, are waiting for the next phase to go. But improvements in, in streetscape, paving, I don't, Connie's here, I think, but I don't think there's any underground work, but may have been sewer water.
And then, as you said, that infrastructure work, that one point one seven million dollars, the city's getting paid back over the thirty-year brownfield.
That's right. Normally, they come out of the capital improvement fund. This way, that fund is being reimbursed by the taxes generated by the project.
Great.
And then on the open meetings, we didn't, the city manager and I didn't want to interrupt the public hearing.
Thank you.
But yes, those were open meetings conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The fact that minutes may not be posted online does not mean that meetings did not happen, so.
Um, Mr. Burn?
Just a couple.
The hearing was closed.
Yeah. What?
Would you mind reopening it? I have a question and a point after I've heard from more people after the hearing was closed.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I want to do that at this point. We, we, we keep shifting around how we do things. Can you save your comments for the public comment at the end, please?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else think that we should reopen?
No.
Okay, then, no. All right. Are we good? Okay, then, let's move on.
Need a motion?
Yes, I do.
Motion to adopt the resolution approving brownfield plan amendment number two Cadillac laws.
Support.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, next, we have a FOIA appeal.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I did see Mr. Stevens in the back. As we have traditionally done, when we have anyone that files an appeal to a Freedom of Information Act or FOIA request, we generally give them the floor for a couple of minutes to advise us what it is that they are appealing. Following that, we then punt it over to our legal counsel to provide some additional context. Then city council takes a moment to discuss as necessary before moving forward with whatever direction council chooses to move forward in. So, Mr. Stevens?
Okay, if, if, to start off, I do have packets, if I'm able to hand those out to the council.
Thanks, Art.
Can I apologize? I know
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a technical two minutes, or what, the other time, when it was a
It's okay.
We go traditionally, when I was on, we didn't really handle that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not gonna If you go on for three days, I might say something, but
Yes. Yeah, I will, um, I thought it might be easier to, um, get you a packet. And I have lettered and numbered each page in case we want to go back and discuss. A1, 2, and 3 are, I thought I was doing something good, because I know tradi, traditionally, they would like to request an extension. So I thought, instead of putting them all in one and have extensions, I'd separate them out by three, because a couple of them were just probably a five-minute, they're either not there or there, and you, you respond to those and you get them off the table. So A1, 2, and 3 are the three requests. I should disclose, even though the first two were dated December twenty-eighth, the third one and A3 was dated January seventh. I did turn, and that was probably a mistake, I did send those in all together on the same time on January seventh. So, um, the first one there, I was just simply looking in reference to ordinance two thousand eighteen-ten. I was just looking for all the written notices sent to all the owners of the restricted zone parcels that have wells prohibited under this ordinance as required under sections forty-two dash one-six-nine. Just looking for any of the notices that were required by that section that were sent out. A2 references the same ordinance, but section forty-two dash one-six-eight, A, B, C, D, and E. And that was just to see if there were any exceptions that were on record and filed, as would have been required by that, that section. Then A3 was the random, I threw multiple ones in, and I knew that was probably gonna take more, that was looking at the communications, documents, and et cetera, of all of the, um, getting up to the private wells that were in that restricted zone. And I do have, I apologize, I didn't print the back, but it basically just said, "Thank you," and my name and information. So I sent out three. And as you know, the Freedom of Information Act is that, that gives you the opportunity to request documentation, and they do have a five-day period. B1, B2, and B3 are the three responses I got back. B1 and B2, you can see there was a different time of day, the other two were probably sent back-to-back. But I can reassure you that they were all three sent separately as three different, um, extension letters. So you think I had three, three extension letters, you get the impression there's gonna be three different responses. So C comes back, um, and C was giving me the, the estimate, like they normally do, where they want to deposit. I assumed that was on probably A3, and maybe the other two didn't have a fee. So I, because I know I got three letters, and B, like I showed you, just saying that they were asking for extensions. D1 and D2 are the, um, my initial FOIA response that I got back. So that one is dated February fourteenth, and, um, this one was denying, denying it because of, and I understood that the personal emails would have to be redacted, and there were attorney-client privilege. So some of you that were on the council then would have received my initial appeal. Actually, I'm, I thought, I was waiting to get information on my other two FOIAs, because I only got this one letter. I was informed that this answered all three of them. So I did send out an, an appeal to the city at that time. By the way, Todd Kiway, excellent job, and through this process later, Anne from Foster Swift, very helpful as well. So this isn't an issue with their job at all, it's more the documentation. Anyhow, E1 shows, um, after I did the appeal, Todd realized, yeah, there was an error. We should have specified more specifically on those FOIAs. And so he sent out E1, which, this one now talks about the first one. So for example, um, it did take care of FOIA number one, because it does say that, yes, there, um, it wasn't because of attorney-client privilege that you were not given this information, it's because those, those notices that were to go, that were required to go out to the property owners within sixty days were never sent. The second one, um, number two under there is referring to the second FOIA. And that one, um, same thing, we are, uh, there was no exceptions that were on file. And so that was a correction from the first one, because there were no exceptions that were on file that said, "We don't have to notify these people because they have an exception by the EPA," or M, um, Eagle, at the time, MDEQ. On E2, the letter dated January seventh, that does get into where they were denying in part, and also, um, they were also denying because of attorney-client privilege, and again, because of some of the redacting, and that some materials didn't exist. So I, again, and by the way, a couple of council, the council members that were on, you probably saw some emails at the time, going back. I again did another appeal, because I felt that there were not all the documentation that was provided, that would have been required by that. I did get a call by Anne, she was very helpful. And so, again, this is the second time now. The city was able to find a file, and that actually is letter F. So this is the one now in March. The city did have a file, and they found thirty-eight more pages of information that was not provided the, the first time, or the second time. So, um, I unfortunately, very patient with Anne, she asked me again. And by the way, I didn't want to keep bringing this, you guys had a lot on your agenda, and so we worked out that we'll just postpone a little, and I think one time the city requested, or two times if they could. Letter G, I got another letter in April after going back and talking to Anne. She went back and said, "I'll have them look up." And low and behold, there's another, at the bottom, you can see the attachment, there's another thirty pages that were found, that were originally not, not included in that first FOIA. So, um, this all happened, as you can see, more recently, and, um, I know Anne was taken off on a trip. So, um, the reason of the appeal is I, what I was saying then is that there was definitely documentation, and I do believe, um, communications that were not provided. Ironically, this process started in January. In the meantime, if you remember, when the past mayor had said, "Hey, um, there's documentation, the old council, you guys knew about this." I did a FOIA, and ironically, I did get one of the documents that I thought should be in here, and that was the Kaiser Industrial Five-Year Report. I didn't know about that document at the time, I had been already not provided it here. But that, that document, for example, um, absolutely talks about the private wells, because that's when it's telling the city, you have to have institutional controls on those, on the wells. And so, my question, and I hope you can understand, this is my third try at it. It did not get it all, I still feel, I know that there's documentation that was not provided with this, that makes me think, what else is there that wasn't provided? And I understand some of the documentation, documentation I got may not be a positive look on the city, but by the FOIA Act, you can't just not provide that for that reason. So, um, I know that there, there's emails, especially in this, that talk about, um, different reports, or, in this case, I, I think they're referring to those five-year reports, that they're referencing that we are asking you, due to these reports, to put in these institutional controls and such. But I do feel that there are still some documentation that's, that's out there. I know some of those five-year reports, for example, definitely should have been, and I don't know if those are other reports that are referenced in these other documents. But that's what the appeal is based off of, of requesting all the documentation that, um, that would be relevant to those private wells in that zone. It, I am taking the extra step, but we shouldn't have to, is to, to go to the other agencies involved to get the documentation from them. But it's just something that should be, should be able to be done in a process where, boom, this is related, we send it out. And I know it wouldn't be attorney-client privilege, because those would be things that would not fall under the, um, attorney pri, client privilege clause. And that's it.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm a little confused. You're, you're running the show, so.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go to you, I'm, I'm not sure, what is it you're appealing?
I'm appealing the fact that this request, and mostly on that third, um, A3, the communications as well as the documentation that was requested. I know for a fact that there are documents that are not provided, and somebody could say, "Well, then why are you, why are you looking for that?" But it still seems it should be provided, because I don't know for sure. But I do know, for example, the Kaiser five-year reports of two thousand ten, the one of fifteen, and the one of twenty, should have been in here. I know that they reference, I believe it's those, unless there's other reports they're referring to in the communications. So, one thing I was looking at with some of that documentation, as well as, as I said after three times, and I continue to get more, is, is there more? Because it makes you think, if they didn't provide that, is there other documentation as well that wasn't provided?
I'm happy to jump in.
I just, I have one more question. So is it, um, like, so you're looking specifically for an email that, where the council would have been set, uh, sent these EPA five-year Kaiser reports, which are, which are public?
No, I'm assuming, by the way, that was one of the things I was looking at, that wasn't in there. I'm imagining that it never happened. Um, that's, I did get through my other email that that didn't happen. Um, sorry, not my other email, my other FOIA. So that was one of the things I was originally looking for. I was looking for communications, for example. The city put in an ordinance in two thousand eighteen, two of you were part of that, but it never happened. There were never, nothing ever happened with it, no notifications happened. So I was looking for, maybe there was a rescinding of that ordinance, or there was another decision or any communication. But the main one is the documentation up to that ordinance being provided. What, what was the, um, what was the information that came in to make that ordinance? And then what reports, what data came in? I did get some good data from that FOIA, but I just know that there's some more out there.
Laura, thanks. Sure, thank you. Um, and thank you for the professionalism and the respect that, because I think it's correct that everybody involved at our office and the city has tried very hard in good faith to produce everything in response to this. We don't look at whether it's good, bad, or otherwise. As you say, a public record is a public record regardless of what it says or what light it casts anyone is, and that's always our approach. So I guess I want to start, and I'm not gonna try to address you, I'm gonna try to address council, but my microphone's over here. I don't think it's as simple as saying, "I ask for more," Um, I don't think it's as simple as saying, I asked for more and then there was more. What happened is you had, if you look at A three, and this is not a critique or criticism of the FOIA request, but these are very broad requests. Talking about, you know, for example, a copy of any communications or documentation relating to the City of Cadillac, reviewing and discussing the concept of the City of Cadillac paying for the private wells being capped or the connection of the properties to the city water system pursuant to section forty-two, one sixty-nine enforcement. So these are, are big nets, which is not uncommon with a FOIA. But a pretty broad net and the city tried to find everything that could fall within that net. What happened later wasn't simply saying, I think there's more. It was, you know, here's an example of a specific type of email I'm looking at. Do you have anything like this? Then that prompted a different kind of search that could be more specific to, do we have these conversations? Uh, and that was through a February twenty-eighth email, um, from Mr. Stevens. Um, so I just, I, I will just take some issue that it wasn't simply, is there more? It was kind of, okay, but this is more specifically the type of email, the people I'm looking for emails from, which allows a smarter search of what are, obviously a lot of public records from many years ago. Um, so now to hear, well, maybe it's not twenty eighteen, maybe it's things back to twenty-ten. Well, perhaps, you know, that could be a separate request. But when the requests are very broad, I think, as I said, the city and certainly our office, everybody in good faith did our best to produce all of the documents that we could find that we believe are responsive to these items. And that's evidenced by providing more documents as time went on and saying, okay, if this is the, if, if you want, you know, emails with, uh, who is it? What's her name at the EPA, um? Forgot her name. But, you know, Sheila Sullivan at the EPA. Um, we've, we've got those provided now, now that we know that's what you're looking for. So, you know, our recommendation, and it's no secret, is, you know, we, we produce now all the documents that we can find, we being the city, that would respond to these requests as sort of clarified in subsequent communications as part of that appeal. So we'd say the appeal's granted as to those additional documents that we provided as recently as last Thursday, um, to Mr. Stevens. As to records that other agencies have, those, I mean, unless we have them, the FOIA request isn't properly directed to us. If there's a more, if you say, I want a copy of a specific email, we can look. We've done our search. We've looked for things that fall within the scope of this. Um, we spent a lot of time searching for documents to find anything within the broad scope of these requests. And so I have to rely on the good faith and the hard efforts of your city staff. Um, and the review that my partner, Ann Serink, did. She's a, a FOIA expert. She does this all the time. Um, she will produce anything that there is that's not exempt. So that's where, where we are at. I'm happy to entertain any questions. I've drafted a proposed FOIA Appeal Response Letter that says that in probably more words than I just said. But essentially says to grant the appeal as to those additional documents that were located and provided and deny as to documents that, that we don't have and could not find.
You mentioned, um, Laura, that, um, on the twenty-eighth, did you say February twenty-eighth, Mr. Stevens provided an example that, that provided clarification that let us find some things? Was that February twenty-eighth?
Yes, February twenty-eighth.
So I don't, and I don't see the email in the, um, pack that Mr. Stevens gave me.
No, I don't either.
There wasn't an email.
Oh, that, that was a in-person example or a conversation?
No, that was one of, I mean, not the.
The twenty-eighth?
That was one of the many conversations with Ann. She said, what other documents? One of the specifics that I was, and I'm not, I'm not in to try to get in a.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty simple. One of the things we did, that was one of the conversations we did had, and she provided them. Another part of that conversation was, hey, I, I had this other FOIA in the meantime. Cause this has been taking a while. This other FOIA had a document I never knew existed. And it's telling the city referencing to this, um, ordinance. So I did mention that to her as well, that the Kaiser reports that, um, that are referenced and that was what was utilized later. I, in some of the emails that you did provide, it talks about those. So, yeah, that was one of the conversations was those. But in addition, it was the fact that the Kaiser reports that were, um, were specific to the EPA giving them to the city for years, saying, you gotta get these institutional controls in. And then the, the other one to try to find out that pattern. And I know, I understand what you're saying, but I am referencing, I know the public record concept is you're right. If it's not something that's the city's, but if it's being used by the city or in possession of the city for it. And I would reference, as I'm trying to find that section, um.
I agree if we have it and it responds to your request. My point was if we don't have it and another agency does, we're, we're not going to.
Yeah.
FOIA it from another agency.
And that's fine. You know, part of this is to get it on the record. If, if, if those that were using the city put together these and, and never had those documents that you, I would have thought they might reply back and say, hey, we don't have that document that you're telling us about. So that's fine. If it's, you know, if that's the position, that's okay.
If there are still, if there are, you know, if there's a specific report that you're saying, hey, I don't see that here. And it wasn't identified in a request. And you want to have something that says, we certify, we do or don't have this report, then by all means, submit that request. Because we want to make sure we give you everything you're asking for. It's just, I think, the broad net and then trying to narrow it down, it makes it difficult. And I appreciate that you worked with Ann and we tried to get you everything. But now we're kind of outside, you know, it's not written in the FOIA request specifically those items.
Sure. Yep. But at the same time, it is, it is the document and I could, you're trying to save it from, you know, going back and, yeah.
Again, I have no, if it's there.
And by the way, with Ann, it was probably just, she wasn't provided it. She's, nothing she could do, you know, so, yeah.
Again, I'll just lay on, we, we've granted what we have that we believe responds. If there's something more specific that you think you're looking for, that, again, that, where we have these broad requests, please submit another request. If you want that letter that says we certify, we don't have it, then by all means.
Sure.
We'll entertain that request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we allowed to make, um?
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
Questions, comments?
Uh, thank you, Laura, for your explanation and willingness to work with, uh, the FOIA request, which of course is a, um, something that as a public institution, we're obliged to do. My comment though is, is I don't know to what end Mr. Stevens is, um, asking for this information. But I do know it's costing the City of Cadillac a lot of money, thousands of dollars of paperwork. Um, and I just, I want the people in this room to know that, uh, these FOIA requests aren't, aren't free and they're not cheap. And, um, it puts staff, city staff, as well as, um, our city attorneys, uh, who are here to provide, uh, legal advice, um, at, at great expense to the city for these requests.
So, but to answer your question, but first it sounds like.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. This is counsel, this is counsel's chance to.
She just asked me.
No, no, it wasn't a question. It was a comment to the counsel and to.
And this is counsel having a discussion.
But it's too bad you didn't want to know the answer.
Oh, okay, well, I guess I did ask a question.
Did you ask him a question?
Well, I, I said.
Okay, have at it.
Yeah, go ahead.
The first part I can't answer. Uh, this is news to me that this costs thousands of dollars. I know I paid a hundred and eighty for it. Um, if it did cost a thousand, you know, I'll probably get it. The, the hard part is I'll get it back, a lot of it from the EPA. And it'll be like this. It'll be cheap.
Oh, my question was to what end are you?
The what end?
Yeah, to what?
The what end? And this will be good because the last meeting you mentioned, you would like more information. So this will be good because part of this, and by the way, FOIAs, um, this was my last resort. And I know the council can attest, the ones that were on, I started in October trying to gather. A couple of members did try and reach out. This was after about three months of no responses, trying to get answers. The ones that I did speak and actually got back to me did not have the information. So just so you know, sometimes it's a last resort. People do not like to have to go through that, the cost and come up. We thought through council. Secondly, I think it's important to know, cause here's this issue going on with PFOS. And we're finding out, I'm trying to find out, I got blamed somewhat that you were on council before and you, and, um, so for, part of this FOIA was to prove the fact that our council was never told all those years. That if we had been told, when I find this two thousand seven Papadopoulos report, if we had been notified and told that there's, there's chemicals and contamination expanding into these private well areas, we could have started making planning then. For some reason, it was decided to keep it private. So part of my FOIA was when people were trying to put the blame on myself and, and more, more me and Bill Barnett, that you guys were on council, to find out, we were never notified. So one of the things through this, I hope, and I've been telling the council, is in the future, this should be something important. So we went on and now since two thousand eighteen, when they knew that there has been contamination in those areas, you, you made, the city made an ordinance. Sixty days or that person could get a civil infraction. We now are going on six and a half years. And those notifications were never sent out by the ordinance that the city put in. And nothing was done for, to let these people know that there was contamination in their water. So there, that is the end.
Thank you.
The end is hopefully to get this information back to the council. And hopefully, maybe there can be decisions made in the future to not just decide if, legally, we didn't have to say anything. But there's a humane part to that too. And, and, uh, you don't have to always follow that legal advice. You could decide that there's contamination out there. We're gonna do the right thing and notify people.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'm, I mean, I guess I, after hearing from the lawyer as well, I mean, I'm definitely prepared with any of these FOIA requests to review redacted material and withheld material and then vote on releasing it. But I'm not really sure, other than, um, doing what, what you said, Laura.
I don't think the, I don't think the appeal is of the privilege.
I don't, so.
No, there were, I didn't even bring it. There was a couple of things that I knew you'd have to go in. I thought it was odd, a couple of things that was re- redacted. But I was like, why have you guys go in? So, yeah, there, that part I wasn't really, you're probably looking at the first.
Well, I'm just, I, I mean, I'm trying to under, understand like what, um, what it looks like. So like, you know, what you getting what you want looks like. Like what would that look like on our behalf then? Us saying, what, we continue looking for records that we're not sure are there yet? Us saying, we're going to extend your request instead of making you file another one?
You know what?
I'm still slightly.
I, you know, it's weird when you know you're, you, when you're going into a game and you know, I knew I was gonna get voted down. It wasn't a problem. But part of it's to get it on the record. And then secondly, um, I'll get that information. It, it's either, it would be something to look at, cause it would either be like, okay, so decisions were made without this information, even though the EPA kept for, if you start looking at it, they're going for almost two years saying, when are you guys doing this? Where's the ordinance at?
And that's, and that's the content of your FOIA request. But, but, but the, um, nature of the appeal though.
The nature of the appeal is that there was information that definitely wasn't included.
And that then was given to you and that there might be more out there, so we should be looking?
There's, I could tell you right now, there's more. But that was the, um, there, there's, I could already tell you three Kaiser reports. I could tell you there was, uh, steps that they were asking for from this. There was just things, but that's fine. You know, uh, I will get that.
Say you knew you were gonna be voted down, like what does voting you up look like? Like what is?
Voting it up is to say, yep, you're right. There were some reports that were not provided that absolutely was the premise of doing that ordinance. That would have been voting it up. I don't mind being voted down. I will get this stuff from the EPA. I will get this stuff from the state. They will provide it or they already have. And then it'll just be something to be able to look at the council later and say, hey, does it look, what do you think? So some of this will be going back to you and say, what do you think? Here's what was provided by them. Here's what was provided by you. What's your opinion of what happened? Was stuff held back? Is it coincidence that after three times, things were coming out? Or was it, was it just a?
I think that what was clarified is that more things came out when the scope was narrowed. And when it was, when it was made clear what to look for. And then things came out. So what I'm hearing you say is that because after your clarification, more documents were found, you were assuming that those were being re- withheld. And that now there must be others also withheld? Is that what you're saying? And you want those released?
No, I, uh, the fact that, by the way, I will get those and it's not a problem.
Is that what you're asking for? I'm not sure what you're appealing. I can't.
I know, I'm telling you right now, I know for sure there's documents, there's three that I actually had conversations with that I know were not provided. It makes you wonder then if there were others. Because, uh, A, they reference, this is by the way from.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I, I don't want to get back into the weeds with all this. I'm just.
That's fine.
I'm trying to deal with this, um, yeah, so.
So are you, are you asking, are you asking for specific reports? And are you arguing that those are within the scope of A three?
So what I'm gonna do is she brought up a point, is you, you hate FOIAs. I will go back and FOIA specific items, okay? But at some point, you're gonna realize those, those are not, they don't seem to be outside of the scope of this, which is fine. I bet you I will get those from the other sources. And it'll just be something to look at for the future for FOIA, um, your process.
Okay.
So, so are you withdrawing your appeal?
No.
No.
Okay.
You can still, um, the letter that we prepared is, I think, consistent with where we're at following this, which is to grant the appeal as to those additional documents that we provided as recently as last Thursday and deny it as to anything else that we did not have to produce.
And then.
Without prejudice to any other FOIA request. If you have a specific report you're looking for that you, is not identified in any of this, please submit a FOIA for it.
Well, yeah, but it shouldn't, I mean, we'll, we'll get into that later when I get them back. Shouldn't have to go through that process.
And this is as a practice matter, and we didn't in this case, sometimes deny FOIA requests as over broad. Because when it's any and all communications and documents on a topic over an unlimited period of time, that's a very difficult things to get your arm around when you're going. That's not specific to your request. This is for a lot of, you know, other requests that come in. But sometimes we try, we say, we'll do our best with what we have to produce what we can find. But if, if generally, people are looking for something narrowing the time period, the topic, the sender is very helpful in locating what people actually want to have. And then you're not paying a deposit for documents you don't want.
Exactly why, I, that would be a suggestion, is if people send in three FOIAs, keep them separate.
I would like to address that actually, and thank you for reminding me, cause I didn't get a chance to. So what, and this isn't just for the City of Cadillac. Our practice is if there are multiple FOIAs the same day, we treat them as one for this reason. There's a minimum amount for, as you know, a fifty-dollar fee for a deposit. And I'm not saying you're doing this, Mr. Stevens, cause you're not. But somebody could submit twenty different letters. And each individually would not get up to that minimum deposit threshold and say, well, they're all separate FOIAs. This one only costs you five dollars produced. This one only costs you ten dollars. This one, twenty. None of them individually get up to the fifty and therefore I don't have to pay a deposit. And so to avoid that kind of, and again, not imputing gamesmanship to you, but the possibility of that gamesmanship, when you have multiple FOIAs from the same person on the same day, we recommend that they be treated as a single request.
Maybe one solution then is if you start sending out three initially, doing the extensions.
I understand that, yeah.
It probably makes sense to go all the way, one way and all the way the not.
I do, I do understand your point.
Yes. Because that, when you say that it's, uh, attorney-client privilege and I'm looking and, and, you know, I'm, I'm spending that time you're talking about, talking to saying, I don't understand why that would be attorney-client privilege. And they agree. And then they say this was a, yeah, this was an error, but it was because they combined them.
Right, so the extensions were separate, but the response was all one. And I can understand what you're saying about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel? So what would be a motion?
Sure.
What were we adding?
Yes. So you've got a draft, um, Freedom of Information Act Appeal Letter. A, a motion could be to, um, approve the letter, which grants in part and denies in part the appeal. Okay.
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay.
I was trying to wrap my head.
There you go. Your memory's working better.
So, Dan, did you make that?
I just moved that.
You made that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French. Yes, Alamas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you so much, everybody. Okay. Communications. Communications.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from September eighth to the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Street and parking lot closures from September eleventh through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And the serving of alcoholic beverages in the city park on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Craft Beer Festival.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from September eighth to fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, street and parking lot closures from September eleventh through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the serving of alcoholic beverages in the city park on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Craft Beer Festival.
Support. Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alamos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Next.
Being recommended to approve street closures and half and full marathon race courses on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for the Festival of Races.
I'd make a motion to approve street closures and half and full marathon race courses on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for the Festival of Races.
Support.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alamos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Phil, Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Next.
Um, motion to approve the display of a banner from May fifth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty-five for the Cadillac Farmers Market.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from May fifth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty-five for the Cadillac Farmers Market.
Second.
Alamos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, next.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harrison Cass from four P M. to nine thirty P M. On May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for the Rotary Club of Cadillac Concert.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from four to nine thirty P M. On May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for the Rotary Club of Cadillac Concert.
Support. Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alamos.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay. That brings us to appointments.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Jan Mastin to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on April seventh, two thousand twenty-seven.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Jan Mastin to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on April seventh, two thousand twenty-seven.
Support. I think, you know, this is a good, uh, application I set on the Board of Review. Um, Jan has a background in real estate, um, which is always helpful on that board. Thank you, Jan.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alamos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now some more appointments.
Uh, it's being recommended to appoint Mayor Shippers to the Planning Commission.
I'd make a motion to appoint Mayor Shippers to the Planning Commission.
Support.
Councilmember French. Yes. Alamos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Now we need to find someone. So, um, go ahead and explain it.
So we have, uh, an agreement with the Alliance for Economic Success. Uh, as a part of that agreement, uh, city council gets to, uh, put, uh, one member on their, uh, local board. Um, in the past, it was, uh, Mayor Carla Filkins, not because it had to be, but that was who was appointed. Uh, could be anybody on council or presumably staff.
Do we have information as to when they meet?
Um, I don't specifically, I believe they do meet, uh, monthly, um, once a month. In the morning, maybe at, at eight or at eight-thirty, um, in the meeting, morning over, uh, at least they used to at the Baker Conference Room, Baker College Conference Room, but.
Is there anybody who would really like to do that?
I'm willing to serve the role if, if needed, otherwise, you know, anybody on council.
I would be willing to do that, too.
Oh, you want to?
Yeah, I find that very intriguing and, um, I, I'd be willing to serve if you want to.
Well, I'd make a motion to appoint, uh, Mayor Shippers to the Alliance for Economic Success Board.
Support. Busy bee.
Is Buns here? He's not giving me, cause he still has to schlep me for a while. I don't know if he's around, he's probably going, poor guy, he has to schlep me everywhere on the lot like luggage these days. Okay.
Alamos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, city managers report.
Uh, thank you, a handful of items this evening. Uh, first one is a request to schedule, uh, a public hearing regarding our capital improvement program for April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Do I'd make a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, I skipped, I apologize. Yes, sorry.
I'm the blind one.
Yeah, you're the blind one, he saw it, sorry. Uh, fir- first item, uh, sorry, there was no, uh, pretty, you know, le- lettering with it, so I didn't see it. Uh, is a, a PFOS update. Uh, I did leave, uh, copies of our, uh, utility department fact sheet, uh, for the general public up by the, uh, uh, front doors. The only, uh, update to the fact sheet since the last one that was produced, um, uh, includes, uh, the latest and greatest, uh, PFOS numbers for our, uh, biosolids that we, um, that we have, uh, over at the, um, wastewater treatment plant. Um, the last quarterly report now shows a non-detect, uh, in both the PFOS and the PFAS, um, which is, uh, fantastic, uh, to report. And, you know, as with anything, it can change. It can go back to a level of detection, uh, as it, as it had previously. Uh, but as of right now, it's a, it's a non-detect. Uh, the other update I wanted to provide, uh, is actually on behalf of the District Health Department, number ten. Uh, I think there may be letters, do we leave the letters there, too? Yes, we did. Uh, so we, um, uh, I had reached out and requested, uh, if a representative could perhaps make it to our meeting tonight. And unfortunately, they, uh, uh, they were unable to attend, but they did provide, um, a couple of pages of, of some good information, uh, including, uh, a, uh, contact sheet, um, that, uh, uh, has names and phone numbers and email addresses, uh, that kinda covers, uh, the gamut of what, you know, your potential issue or question might be. And then, you know, what, what agency and, and who should you be, uh, reaching out to accordingly. Uh, additionally, uh, it talks about how, um, uh, the M Part, which is the Michigan PFOS Action Response Team, uh, is looking at, uh, additional areas in Wexford County, uh, to create study zones out of. So again, uh, information is in the back of the room. And both this, uh, letter, as well as, uh, the, uh, fact sheet are posted on our website under PFOS Resources.
Thanks, Marcus.
Um, have we, um, done testing outside of the area like we talked about last time? Is Jeff, um, meet, um, you mentioned, I heard you talking about testing earlier. Is that outside that area? Are we?
Jeff, you wanna address that?
Uh, we, we did, uh, as at council's last meeting, they approved the CycloPure test. So we did get, uh, a hundred of those and sent out letters last week. Uh, we did, uh, have four responses, which we're going to test outside of the, uh, M Part area, but in the city of Cadillac. I'm assuming the people got their letters today, uh, and so we'll get more coming up. So, um, we have not done any testing yet, but we have scheduled to do testing and we have the equipment now, so.
And I, I think it's important also, and, and Jeff, maybe clarify if, uh, if you need to. Um, uh, but when folks get the CycloPure, uh, tests back, it is gonna list, I don't know, a dozen, maybe, uh, different PFOS types. PFOS, at least the way I kind of interpret it, um, while not a generic term, is used generically. Um, s- similar to how people might use the word Kleenex. You know, Kleenex is a brand name, but you, you ask somebody for a Kleenex regardless, right? Um, and so of all of the listings of the PFOS types that will come back on a test result, some of them are regulated by the government, some of them are not regulated by the government. Um, there are going to be hits likely, if you have any of it in there. And you need, you need to contact the proper person, which is what the, um, fact sheet contains and the letter contains. We have all of this contact information also on our, um, on our website to, to really help understand where you fall. I- is it something that is, you know, uh, at a crisis level, you know, is it not? Uh, the information that's out here includes, you know, uh, uh, contact information to the state's toxicologist as well, you know, for our area. And so, you know, it's really imperative that you don't just take, you know, the, the test results back that will then just simply total up everything and give you a, a number at the bottom and say, you know, oh, my God, I have, I have X in my, in my water. Doesn't, doesn't mean that you may not have a problem, but the problem could be very different than how you're perceiving it.
Right, one of the commit, one of the things that was explained to me is that the number that you get, um, as the total result from these is like cumulative. So where it would say this item, you have, for example, five, and the accepted amount is eight. And this item, you have three, and the accepted amount is this one. And so what they do is they add up all those amounts and give you a final amount, a final number that does not reflect what is safe for each of those things. And it's not cumulative, cumulative, um, but the results appear cumulative. So please, when you get these test results, is, am I right, Jeff, is it?
That's how CycloPure does it.
That's how CycloPure does it.
They have individual results and then they total all the individual. Um, when we are giving those, our tests out, we will be handing them a, a, a chart that says what the state levels are, what the federal levels are. And then we'll actually have a blank for them to have, place their own levels. Because as Marcus said, they'll, they'll report twelve, fifteen items, and only about eight of them actually have limits currently. So, and some of those are federal limits, some of those are state limits. So we'll put a, a chart together for them, so they can actually put it in. And they'll know, oh, this, maybe this one, there's no area for me to put it on the paper. It doesn't have a limit, obviously, at that point. Or the ones with the limits, there'll be something there. We, we expect we'll still get calls at the lab to, you know, which we, we welcome. We'll talk to them, and we'll point them in the correct direction.
Thank you.
So, um, but yeah, they, they do do the total, but they do also give the individual numbers.
Yes.
But.
So, piggybacking off of that conversation, when we tested the biosolids, is that a test again for, um, several dozen? Is that just specifically for the PFOS and PFAS, or is that similar to the CycloPure one?
No, I think that test, I, I looked at it today. I think there was, if I had to guess, I'd say there was thirty to forty, uh, conta- uh, uh, PFOS type, uh, contaminants on that test. So, um, the big ones we know is PFOS and PFAS. And, and as Marcus said, those were both non-detect. Uh, a whole bunch of them on there was non-detect, so, um.
And I think I, well, so I, I do have, I do have a little bit more, though. Um, you know, with the, you know, you talk about how some of them are regulated and aren't regulated. But, you know, these companies, um, you know, in two thousand and two, they were pinned down, they started to phase out a lot of these. But they engaged in a practice of, um, what a lot of people call regrettable substitutions, where they would change the chemical makeup of it, um, just, just slightly, and then, and then call it unregulated. I think what you do also see in, in post-two thousand and two, um, is you see, um, PFOS chemicals that are slightly less dangerous in that they have a shorter half-life. So the bioaccumulation rate isn't so great. Um, people talk about the PFOS being one of the worst, because it has a half-life of, of five ye- over five years, um, inside your body to flush out. Um, some of the newer ones, um, the PFBS, um, has a half-life of, uh, several months, I think it's five months. So it's significantly, you know, the, the rate of accumulation and the ability to build that up in your blood, um, is different with, with, with this post-two thousand and two, um, you know, uh, chemical group. Um, but, you know, the fact that some are regulated and, and some aren't is just the, the people making this always being, um, one step, uh, ahead of the game, so to speak. Um, I, I have another thing, too, because I like to do it at this, um, PFOS thing instead of at the, at the, um, good of the order. But, you know, council, um, former council member Stevens was, um, talking about those Kaiser Superfund sites. Um, Kaiser Superfund site reports that came out every five years. Um, those, uh, reports were, um, done by the EPA. They were noticed in the paper at the time. Um, they're published on a webs- website, they have been published on a website. Um, and I'm going to take just a second, I, I won't do it for too long, but I'm gonna read from, um, three of these reports. Um, slightly out of context, but I'm not trying to distort the story. Um, people need to, to read these themselves. Um, so in the August two thousand and ten report, um, there's, there's a section on page twenty-seven where it says, um, at least twelve residences in the city of Cadillac and Herring Township use private wells, which the Wexford County, um, Department of Public Works tries to monitor. Of these, about six are connected to the township system, but are still using their private wells for drinking water. Three of these wells are within the city of Cadillac and near the Kaiser industrial site. Although water mains and service connection pi- piping have been extended to these three homes, the residents have refused to connect. Now, just to pause, are, now those three homes, Jeff, uh, within the, um, city Cadillac near the Kaiser industrial site, are these the same three homes that we're gonna talk about in twenty eighteen, that we're gonna talk about in twenty twenty, that the Andersons are included in?
I would assume those are the same ones.
You know, so i- i- in August of two thousand and ten, this report here says, um, you know, they have water mains, they have service, um, connection. There was a point when the Andersons showed up where, where we asked, Jeff, what does it take to get these guys hooked up? Um, the answer was a plumber, you know? Because since two thousand and ten, um, and I think the main had to be replaced, it was so old. Um, but that, that piping was, was all the way through, done to the house of, of those, of those three. Me- the meter had to be redone, yep, but, but the service line was there. Um, it says, you know, the residents refused to connect. About five private wells are on Thirteenth Street on the north end of the city wellfield. The wells identified to be at risk in the city in Cadillac and Herring Township were sampled and found to be safe. You know, so you see another part of the story when people say, you know, you didn't tell us about PFOS. And, you know, you know, you have, you have a service line, you have a water main, they were trying to hook you up, and they say, no, I like my free water from the ground, it was testing safe. Um, you know, to continue with the one from two thousand and ten, it says, in early two thousand and eight, the EPA has ha- asked Herring Township trustees to pass an ordinance restricting the use of existing private wells in North Park and Pine View subdivisions of Herring Township. Herring Township trustees, however, refused and noted that its residents did not want to bear the costs of a prohibition on use of private residential drinking water wells. The same arguments you're gonna hear for the next fifteen years. Um, the Wexford County D P W manages and operates the Herring Township Water Supply System and is the enforcement agency for any ordinance that is put in place for the water supply system. However, the township has the ultimate authority regarding the adoption and implementation of the proposed ordinance. There is a Herring Township ordinance effective April nineteen eighty-six that required township homeowners and property owners to connect to the township water system if they are located within two hundred feet of a water distribution line. However, that ordinance did not require those residents to abandon their private wells. In areas where public water lines are available, all new structures or uses are required to hook up to the public system. But because abandonment of private wells is not required, the private wells may still be used even when the residence was, even when the residence was connected to the water supply. Although fines could be imposed, the ordinance is enforceable, but compliance has been difficult to achieve. Um, the D P W is currently proposing a more protective Herring Township ordinance to prohibit the use of private wells in the township water service area and to require abandonment of the private wells. I'm gonna fast forward, um, the other ones won't be as long. I'm gonna fast forward five years to the, um, twenty fifteen report. You'll see on page six, which is basically the introduction, the EPA is gonna say, um, they're talking about the Kaiser site. Uh, ICs are, are in place, internal controls are in place in the form of local ordinances um, for the city of Cadillac and Herring Township that prohibit groundwater use. The existing site use is consistent with the remedial action objectives set forth in the decision documents. However, in order for the remedy to be protective, in the long term, the following actions need to be taken to ensure protectiveness. The city of Cadillac should strengthen its ordinance by requiring all current and future residents in the city to abandon private wells and connect to the mis- municipal water system. Procedures should be implemented to monitor a- and track compliance. I mean, right there, the two thousand and fifteen report says, you know, the same thing that the city manager, um, introduced two or three months ago. You know, you saw a lot of people upset, it was just the suggesting, he, he was broaching the topic. We got calls from several people by the water plant that said, my water's fine. Several people i- uh, all around the town saying, don't make me hook up. Um, that was the two thousand and fifteen report. Fast forwarding here to the twenty twenty report. And now, you know, this is the part, I believe, where they're talking to Jeff. Um, and this is where, you know, you're gonna see, um, Jeff says the Cadillac ordinance of September twenty eighteen has been effective and all residents are connected to the municipal water supply. Records indicate that all private wells have been abandoned. Now, all private wells have been abandoned, we're talking about the three wells. I, I don't think Mr. Dietland ever indicated to the EPA that there were no private wells in the city. Um, Mr. Dietland indicated that occasionally they receive inquiries from residents living near the city borders regard- regarding approval to install private wells, but the city does not regularly check residents' water supply sources. regard- regarding approval to install private wells, but the city does not regularly check residents' water supply sources. Um, you know, we did pass that in twenty eighteen. There, there were three houses that in two thousand and ten had water mains and service lines um going to them. Those are the three houses that we lost track of. Um, those are the three houses that, that showed up here with the Andersons. I believe one of them still isn't hooked up, um, the one without electricity, you know, I don't know about the third one. Um, but these, these re- reports I, I, I think are important. They talk about what we're still talking about, they talk about what we were doing in twenty eighteen, um, in twenty twenty. And, you know, when Mr. Stevens i- is referencing, you know, these reports, I don't know if he was trying to FOI him, I know he made the um, you know, argument to me that, you know, these, were, were these given to council, you know, di- did you see these? You know, the education, the community education um to council, to the community, about the Superfund sites, you know, probably did fall by the wayside. I- i- it, it needed to be ongoing, you know, when people show up and say, I didn't know this, like, you didn't know that, you know, a Superfund, you know, site was established, that the EPA reports are published online, you know? But I, you know, it took me a long time to, to figure this stuff out and find this stuff a- as well. Um, these five-year reports definitely helped, I think this is the third time I mentioned them. Um, this is the only time I read from them, so um that is, that was my last point on that, so thank you.
Thank you, very good.
Yeah, yeah.
If I could just correct something.
Yeah, Jeff.
Mr. Ingalls said, we did uh extend, there is water main or, or laterals extended to the property line of those houses. The, the, the Andersons did have one that went farther and went into the house, but everybody else had water, uh laterals extended to the property line, which they could hook up to. But I didn't want the two, you know, the other ones don't have them that goes farther on.
I think that's where I got confused, Jeff, that I, I did know the Andersons had the service line installed.
They, they asked, the former homeowner asked for it to be extended in there and then never made the connection, kept his old well, and obviously new owners that came and just kept the old well too. Um, the other two, uh, 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 the one on Thirteenth Street, he, he said he told them no not to extend it into his house, but it's to the e- edges of a property. The property, uh, the Sixth Street property actually recently has been sold, to my understanding, and it's going to be uh tore down and we've already uh contacted the new owners and said we will pay to have the well abandoned and uh capped, so, is my understanding, you know, when, when that happens, I'll let the council know.
Thank you, thanks. Okay.
Done. Well, I'm done with that.
Where were we?
We're at um.
Uh, request to schedule a public hearing.
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing for April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five to consider approval of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and thirty-one capital improvement program.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, similar to the last one, uh, request to schedule a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-six annual operating budget on April twenty-one.
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing for April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five to discuss the twenty-five, twenty-six annual operating budget.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, next item uh is again regarding the Diggins Hill Community Park Playground Project. Uh, city council previously uh awarded a contract for the actual equipment and we had mentioned that we uh were in the process of bidding out for uh site um uh, uh demolition, uh grading, uh related activities. We did ask or request as a part of that uh for folks if they were so interested in donating a, a portion. Uh, you'll see, we did receive, uh, I think, seven bids uh with um the recommendation going to CJ's Excavating Inc. out of Cadillac, Michigan. Uh, they are donating uh fourteen thousand, five hundred, uh fifty dollars, which uh brings them to uh a total, a net project bid of fifteen thousand dollars, which is the lowest, uh and that is our recommendation.
And it's like fifty percent of, the donation is fifty percent of that bid.
Great.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the Diggins Hill Community Park Playground Project to CJ's Excavating Inc. for the bid amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Support. Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, next item is a, a, a request for consideration of the purchase of a work truck for the uh public works department. Our current budget does include an appropriation for the purchase of a three-quarter ton truck. Uh, we do use, uh, or try to use, uh, MyDeal dealerships, uh, they provide us typically with the best pricing from state uh, uh bid lists. Uh, the recommendation uh is to go with Todd Wenzel Buick GMC uh is the lowest bidder in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a twenty-twenty-four Chevrolet Silver- Silverado.
I'd make a motion to award the purchase of one work truck in accordance with the MyDeal contract to Todd Wenzel, Wenzel Buick GMC in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight.
Support.
Thank you. We'll wait on the upswing there.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, um, uh, members of the city council, and just as I mentioned, that we typically try to use MyDeal dealers in this next item, uh, that is not the recommendation. Uh, we are looking at uh acquiring uh two uh vehicles uh for uh the Cadillac Police Department uh for patrol vehicles uh after a, a total loss uh that we uh received, which by the way, is being covered uh from insurance. And so, as you'll see in the public communication document, uh, the recommendation is actually to uh reject uh the MyDeal bids uh and purchase one of the twenty-twenty-four Durango patrol vehicles to, uh, excuse me, from uh Galina's Van Dyke Dodge in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five Durango patrol vehicle to Ziegler Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in the amount of forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and funds are available in our general fund accordingly.
I'd make a motion to reject the MyDeal bids and award the purchase of one two thousand and twenty-four Durango patrol vehicle to Galliana's Van Dyke Dodge Ram in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-five Durango patrol vehicle to Ziegler Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in the amount of forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, um, mayor and members of the city council. Under introduction of ordinances, um, we are requesting city council to um, uh, set a public hearing for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five regarding uh an ordinance that would amend our zoning code to conditionally rezone property. This is property off of Pearl Street, is that right, John? You, you just give me the thumbs up. Yes, off of Pearl Street, uh, similar to the action that city council uh considered and took earlier this evening. Uh, we first need to have the property zoned um accordingly for the developer to actually come forward with, with plans, but my limited understanding is we're looking at a potential storage, um, uh, uh, s- uh, yeah, self-storage type, type building.
And if you watched the planning commission meeting, this was the, um, this is a landlocked parcel, is this that funny? Is that, yeah, okay.
So it requires an easement to get to it, yeah.
Yes. And it is a conditional rezoning, um, so they can only use it for that, still subject to future approvals.
Um, I will make the motion to adopt the resolution to introduce the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to conditionally rezone property and set a public hearing for April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, uh, moving right along, the next two items are related. Uh, you received the full briefing earlier this evening. Uh, this is uh in light of the uh approval of the amendment to the Brownfield Plan for the Cadillac Lofts Project. Uh, these next two items will now revoke uh two abatement programs that are uh no longer appropriate for the site. And so the first one is regarding the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate.
Okay, make a motion to adopt the resolution revoking the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate for Cadillac Lofts.
Support. Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
And the second one is regarding the Commercial Redevelopment Exemption Certificate.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution revoking the Commercial Redevelopment Exemption Certificate for Cadillac Lofts.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to, there's some minutes and reports of boards and commissions, Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority, y'all can check those out on your own. And now I will open for second public comments. Same rules apply, please be respectful, you have three minutes, and... That's it.
Counsel? Uh, just real quick, um, couple of things. Um, on the PFOS at Mackinac Trail, we have to stop that in its tracks. We can't use filters and all that and try to stop the PFOS in that vocational school. Our children are drinking that water, and I don't know how proficient the filters are, but we gotta, you gotta put wells down or wa- monitoring wells and evac systems and do whatever. And also on the, the new Cadillac Lofts with the old laundry there, you know, the uh contamination, you know, the one lady said it's only been, it's only twelve foot deep. Maybe they put monitoring wells down and seeing how far deep the pollution is, but we know that it's been spreading after all these years. And it's the same thing that happened to another business uptown. All the pollution has gone down into the ground even farther, and unless they have test, put test wells down to figure out how far they are, they're not gonna get all the contamination. So, in the meantime, and then, uh, council, councilwoman, uh, French, you know, uh, you mentioned about FOI's and what they cost the city, but the people need to know the truth, you know? And if you tell the truth the first time, you don't have to back up. So that even though it costs money, thousands of dollars, the, the people, the public, the citizens of Cadillac are not getting the truth, so, just for your information, even though it does cost, I don't mind to pay that, I'll pay that too. So, anyways, uh, we need to stop the pollution going to the schools. Our kids can, our children, our youth cannot drink this water. It's very important that we stop it in its tracks and we have not done that. And this PFOS has gotten away from us from ten to fifteen years, so, anyways, those are my last few comments. Um, you know, we got, we can't let the children use this water. And we gotta do, figure a solution and come together and stop it, especially at Mack Trail with the young children up there and the vocational school with all the children from all the tri-counties that go there.
Thank you.
Hello, Pastor Troy Baxter again, and I just want to say I thank you for approving our request for rezoning. And I want to remind us of something that we already know. A man named Paul uh said this a couple thousand years ago. He said, and let us not be weary and well-doing. For our induced season, we shall reap if we faint not. And as I look around the room, uh, both sides, uh, there's people that are walking that out, and I just want to express my appreciation for your commitment to not become weary and doing what's right.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, let's move to good of the order.
I do have one item.
Thank you.
Um, I uh wanted to mention publicly, and, and we'll have some information out um before the end of the week, uh, there's going to be a utility rate open house uh set for April sixteenth at five-thirty PM at our water headquarters, which is located at seventy-two forty-one East Forty-four Road. It'll be in the training room. Um, it'll be an opportunity uh for uh the general public, uh, as well as certainly anybody on city council that would like to come to, uh, to hear from um, uh, staff, but most importantly, to hear from our uh rate consultant uh on where we're at and where, uh, where we need to go. So, just wanted to mention that date and time.
Thank you.
I have a super, I know I've talked a lot, but I, um, as we were in the room discussing the um, um, what we're gonna do about our Spectrum TV contract, right? A- a- and carrying the stuff, um, you know, carrying it live on Spectrum versus on the internet. Um, we, we were talking about saving money, but I think, you know, um, something we maybe might wanna spend money on is posting the minutes of all these meetings online. It's a very common thing, I think, in municipalities to be able to go to a website, um, click on whatever board it is and, and find, um, you know, years' worth of minutes. And I don't, I don't think that's a bridge too far um for a community of our size. Um, so wh- whereas we're, we're saving money maybe by not, um, you know, continuing to, to project it live on the Spectrum channels, whi- which is, you know, a very narrow slice of media, maybe we could increase the accountability or transparency elsewhere by, um, in turn, posting the, the minutes for all of our meetings. So that was just a suggestion.
I would like to acknowledge, uh, our special guest that we hear from school today. Uh, I'm sure you're getting credit for this or something and we're forced to it, but I do appreciate you all being here.
Okay, well, I have, I have a couple of things. First of all, um, I finally, um, we have compiled the um city manager's evaluation summary, and then I created a one-page summary, and basically, this is the city manager's evaluation. Um, that it talks about strengths in strategic planning, um successfully implement projects and pursue grants aligned with city goals, and I apologize for this formatting, I don't know why it turned out so weird. Organizational mission and community engagement continues to take measures regarding public health issues such as PFOS contamination. Council relations provides regular updates and maintains open communication despite some criticism about timeliness. Leadership highly respected by city staff, investors and developers, along with municipal leaders across the state, inspires loyalties among those he leads. Physical responsibility, strong track record for responsible budgeting and securing outside funding. External communication promotes Cadillac enthusiastically, attracting development and investment. Operational goals exceeds expend- expectation in aligning work with city council's strategic priorities. Staff management and culture maintains a professional and respected environment, respectful environment, um, leads by example. An area of improvement is internal communication, um, better managing communication flow and tone between city staff and council members, especially during public discourse. Um, and then, final comments, that Mr. Petcha is a dedicated professional with deep expertise in municipal governan- governance. His contributions are valued highly and he is regarded as a vital part of the city's continued success. And, um, and this is the compiled data from the, from the surveys by council members, and it was, um, we used the ones who were, the three of us who were remaining, um, after the resignations. So that's there, and I'll give everybody a copy of this, and I know I sent it electronically, I'll give you a copy of all this stuff as well. Also, um, I want to address a couple of things that were brought up earlier. Um, strategic planning is yes underway, strategic planning is not a one-hour session. Um, we have already taken action, um, some actions based on some of the areas that we came to a conclusion where we need to, where we need to go. So that is ongoing and happening, um, and, uh, and I wanna thank, um, Mr. Petcha, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Dietland, um, and community member and my, and for put, taking the time to get us looking forward in a, in a solutions-based way. Um, one of the things that came out of that, and this was also brought up, about a place, um, to have conversation, and for that purpose, starting this Wednesday... And for that purpose, starting this Wednesday, and every Wednesday after a council meeting, um, please come join me with, uh, coffee with the mayor at After Twenty-Six Cafe. And that'll be ten-thirty in the morning on Wednesdays, following each council meeting. And have a cup of coffee on us and, um, in conversation. And I'll be there and probably one staff member. It'll probably be different ones at different times, but to just be able to talk and ask questions so it could be that, that discourse that we want. So that's starting this Wednesday. Hope to see you there, and we'll continue after that. Um, that's all. Hope to see you all also at the, out at the water plant. And if you haven't been out there, it's really, it's a great place to go have a meeting.
So I do, yeah, I've overthink, it's, 'cause, you know, I, um, these are gonna be available for people to review the, the compiled city manager evaluation summary.
How, how, I'm not sure how to do that. I'm gonna give it to the paper. Um, how would we, how could we do that? Could we post this? Oh, do you, how would you feel about that?
Up to council.
Public, public document.
Yes. Okay, so, yes, I would like this posted. And you have the electronic, um, so we'll post this on the website?
Yeah, under the city council page.
On the city council page. So you'll be able to look at it all there as well. Thank you. Thanks for... With that, we will close this meeting. Thanks, everybody.